Good evening, everybody. We are about to open up our city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 6th. We will rise for our implication. We will rise for our implication today by Mr. Andrew Stotter and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem by Mr. Fred Rice of where it works in the emissions. Please rise.
Please have your kids. Holy God, in your infinite love, you have created us for community. You have promised to covenant justice and love for the common good of others. We have charged as much over the days who are less fortunate and are in great need. Help this community nurture and sustain the dignity and rights of those in our city and our county. Help us to stop getting one group against the other. Let us work to improve social policy and benefit all. Help our leaders improve economic opportunities for all our citizens. Let them be ever mindful of the needs of our poor, our elderly, and most of all, our children. Because our children are the future of this city, this county, and this nation. Amen.
Good evening. Please remain standing for our national anthem, please. I want to thank everybody for coming out for our meeting tonight. And thanks to Mr. Rice for that presentation of our national anthem. And it really is in memory and tribute to all our veterans, so this is St. Monday's Veterans Day. Are there any veterans in the house? If you could, please rise. Let's give them all a hand. And thank you for your service. Next, we will have, before we get started, I asked our city manager to introduce our newest apartment guest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce the Director of Neighborhood and Community Services, who's just come on board this week. She has a free full day. She's soaking up a lot of information and meeting with staff. It is Donnie Matt Cawes.
I am so proud, y'all, excuse me, doing a little science fiction right now. But I'm so proud to be here and to represent the City of Brunswick. I have come back here about four years ago now and have had a lot of community experience as far as program development and community services. So I'm so excited about the great things that we're giving for the City of Brunswick.
Thank you. As we move right along, our first item is public comment. We have some wanted, oh, excuse me, a comment. A few items that we need to leave from our. Okay, please. I'd like to refer item number seven. I took approval of application to a free main chain of G Street. I'd like to refer that item to you later today. Okay, the motion for defer item number seven. Proportional second for deferment of item number seven until next representative meeting. Any further comments? Here in the hall, if you can reach right hand, I motion carries. Please understand that we are only deferring that item until we figure out a couple of things that's discrepancy in that. So, sir, any other addition or addition?
Yes, I'd like to also defer item number twelve.
Motion second for deferment of item number twelve is a discussion of public orders. It's been pro per motion, motion accepted and further discussion. Here in the hall, if you can reach right hand, I motion carries too.
I would also, Mr. Mayor, I would add two items in the item to consider for approval. I'd like to add, consider for approval, the execution of community development block grant disaster recovery homeowner rehabilitation and reconstruction program. So, Mr. Mayor, please.
Motion second for to add item number eight, I imagine. For execution of community development block grant disaster recovery homeowner rehabilitation reconstruction program. Any further discussion? Here in the hall, if you can reach right hand, motion carries and that's all. Thank you. So that'll be item eight, eight. Okay. All right. And there's no more additional addition to our agenda. We'll move right on. First item on the due to public comment, we have Ms. Kena Rice. Kena Rice, are you in the building? Ms. Rice? Seeing that she's not right now, Ms. Madam Clerk, anyone else to sign up for?
Yes, Mayor. Hayley Bernstein.
Ms. Bernstein, please come forward, take your name, your address, and you'll have five to six minutes.
Okay, Hayley Bernstein at 14 Richmond Street. I appreciate you allowing me this opportunity to talk. I actually came to show everybody I represented a few businesses. They were joining a turkey hunt through the month of November. So the locator that I gave you earlier has listed participating businesses. If they have the turkey that day, there are three winged turkeys that are roaming around. Maybe I've lost them once beyond all downtown businesses, you get a 10% discount. You can also enter the contest, which leads up through the end of November. Shucks are always a Saturday, it's November 30th. And if you shop downtown businesses and you collect receipts, then you can win prizes in the month of shopping. There are two prizes, one is for the people who shop in most businesses downtown. It's not a dollar amount, it's more of a place amount. And the other one is for the person who spends the most money downtown. So those are the two activities. The number of turkeys is on the back of the lotion, and I'm trying to put aside a copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest in our community in Upso in the downtown area as well. Appreciate that, everybody. Madam Clerk, anyone else sign up?
No, ma'am, there's the end of the list, ma'am.
Well, move right along, then. Our first item, our next item is a recognition, presentation, and awards certificate of appreciation presentation to Mr. William H. Brown of City of Brunswick Piloted Commission. And this certificate would be presented by former Mayor, Mayor Brian Thompson. Because Mr. Brown served that capacity mainly during Mr. Thompson's tenure. So, sir.
Mayor, Commissioner, it is a pleasure to be back. It's been six years since I've been here. I love what you've done with the place. I was so pleased when I got the call a few weeks ago, and thank you, Mayor, for agreeing to let me do this. It was seven years ago. I was still in office when I was up here for calling somebody, and I can't remember how old I am now. But Bill wanted me reappointed to the pilot commission. And he was 94 years old, I believe, at the time. And I said, okay, we'll reappoint you, but you have to promise you're going to serve out your entire term. And he's a man of work. He's a man of many things. I mean, he's a man who was born right after World War I, who got his real estate license before World War II. And I think in the last 75 or 80 years, he's probably sold every piece of real estate in Brunswick at least three times. I think Bill was one of the first people I met when I moved here over 20 years ago. And we had many, everybody goes Bill. You could not beat Bill. Any way she went, there was Bill. Bill Brown was everywhere, literally. Every time I turned around, I thought, Mr. Bill Brown. And we'd have many conversations about Bill. One of the most usual ones was, you know, who's been here longer? Bill Brown or Sand? And it was usually Bill Brown. But when Bill, when we reappointed him to the commission, to the pilot commission, he did agree to serve out that term. And he is a man of work. Bill, if you'd like to stand up and Marty reforming, I think Marty, you were here. You actually recommended him for yet another seven year tenure the last time.
I told him he needed Bill.
Yeah, I know, you did. You did. And I tell you, if he commits to another seven year, he will serve it out. This City of Brunswick certificate of appreciation presented to William H. Brown in recognition for over 50 years. Over 50 years of outstanding and excellent service as a member of the Piloted Commission. The mayor and the commission thank you for your distinguished service to the City of Brunswick as a member of the Piloted Commission. Given this sixth day of November 2019 by the mayor and commission of the City of Brunswick. Bill.
I have no idea why I was appointed. It's the only part I care about. I'm happy. It's been a while. I've known you 50 years. But anyway, I'm glad it was only a seven year term.
You know, it's good to hear about people who are really here with their, their all and off of Brunswick. And it's hard, it's hard sometimes to hear that some owners basically decide to take Brunswick out of their vein and the dog's head will go now. However, Brunswick was here in the past, and Brunswick will rise again when it was in the same day before. Mr. Brown can attest to that, I'm sure. But it will rise again. Everything comes full circle most times. So, we move right on. We have our next item is a certificate, a presentation to city staff and audit committee member participants at the Lean Six Sigma implementation training. And I believe, Mr. Kidd, you want to?
Not Mayor O'Ton.
Mayor O'Ton would present. Mr. Kidd, you want to say anything about this training?
No.
No? Will that was all standing up? All right. Everyone who did, please don't go off right, please. Now. Back to our place. I'll just not use my. That's mine. This is a cultural high school for college. Corporate training department. These were the boys, these individuals for their, for their, for the Six Sigma training. I'll turn the mic. How about that? Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, yes.
And so they all took this training back in September. They just get this certificate, it's all right. And the first one that we have here is presented to Mayor of City of Brunswick, Mr. Cardinal Hart.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Julie Martin. Commissioner Felicia Harrison. Mr. Douglas Harrison. Lawrence Martin. Mr. William Kidd.
You made it, sorry.
This Manila Bryson Kidd. Mr. Jeremiah Dickerson. Not here. Mr. Pamela Bailey. Mr. Kathy Mills. Nicole Hart. Hmm?
Okay. Ally Cole. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor O'Ton, for presenting those certificates. I hope everybody knows that we are not through with our training. We will be continuing on with that type of training to make ourselves better, to actually, to govern this city and also staff to, to do the things necessary for, for the citizens of the City of Brunswick. So thank you so very much for that. Our next item on agenda is public hearing and land use. Additional use permission petition number 1911 from Robert Bryant Agent. Petition for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential at 519 Norwich Street. With Brad Dysh, our planning and codes and building director, presented.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Yes. As you stated, we have an application here for 519 Norwich Street. It is a 1.4 acre parcel with a three story building and associated parking. And they are applying for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential at this location. It is only general residential. And parcels to the north are zoned public commercial. Parcels to the east are zoned public commercial. Parcels to the west and south are zoned R6 residential. And the applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing conditions, whether they perform general maintenance and rehead of the existing buildings. You're seeing this because Section 236-3, it requires that multifamily dwellings need a conditional use permit in this zone. And as you know, it's a part of the Brunswick City Hospital, which was operated in the late 1800s until the mid 1950s. By the 80s, the buildings were converted into one bedroom apartments for use as a personal care home. And in the 90s, the buildings were purchased by a state agency for use as a care home. Public agencies, if I write, do not require a conditional use permit. Since we are, they are proposing that they are going away from the public use, that's why the conditional use permit requirement, if you can. The building meets all of the other zoning requirements for multifamily use, with the exception of the front step down of 15 feet. We do not request a move of the building. So, October 10th, Planning and Appeals Commission held a public hearing for this application. No one from the public spoke for or against the application. The Planning and Appeals Commission discussion included parking requirements being sufficient, the outdoor area and noise levels, and professional management company being on site. The Planning and Appeals Commission recommended the approval of this application in agreement with staff with a three to one vote with one extension. Staff recommend granting the initial permit. And we do have the applicants represented, so.
Commissioner, any questions for our director?
Do you have any idea what the pass or number of occupants they were dealing with?
I believe that there are, and I can get clarification. I think almost all of the units are room and bedroom. And 24 unit apartment building, and I'm scanning through. I feel like.
24, 48.
Yeah, 24, 48. Yes. We can confirm that, yeah. And you can see after the application itself, the proposal from them.
Did this have to go by one agreement coordination with, sorry, preparation?
It did not, because they're not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building. They are aware that any changes to the exterior actually, now that I've said that, I believe that they are just out of the preservation district.
So are there any other, like, site improvements that they want to make to the property or?
Yes, they are going to continue to serve to, with the white sensing in the two gates that are locked in the security entrance. They are looking at resurfacing the on-site parking, landscaping, maybe professional maintaining, and enhanced up lighting of the oak trees. There's a goldfish pond kind of in the middle somewhere in that outdoor area. And then we can bring that to an outdoor entertainment area for seating and headaches and such for residents. And the dumpster will remain as an application for residence use. There aren't, there are many changes to the exterior.
Is the building already sprinkled or?
Yes.
They not are.
They are sprinkled, they are.
Power sensors, it's not detectors, but I would think it's on.
It does.
Okay, no further questions for guys, the owners. Will you please come forward and give your like?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Bryant, and this is Kate Brown, and she's very instrumental in helping me put together this package for what we're hoping to call Silverwood Norwich. For the renovation of the parts there. We hope to make a very nice setting there and do a renovation inside and make it attractive and desirable again.
Have you attended the NPA meeting of?
We did. We took it before the NPA meeting, and we had a standing renovation in support of the project. Anyone give the full renovation before we start leasing out the residence we've developed? Yes, and we may have one model to show before we do the renovation, but no, then until the renovation is complete, so that a pre leasing type strategy, then no arguments until it be completed. And then what, what do you foresee as the completion date or time? And then say the 2020.
Have you ever done a building like this? Sort of. We'll tell those as I'm answering now, same time, we go through renovations periodically by the command.
This is a little bit original. I had my thoughtful, but that's the only.
Mayor O'Ton. I'm going, I'm going across some of those, those weird colors, Ford there.
Wow.
We have to give her some credit, too.
Right.
You wasn't going there to check about?
No, I'm from Columbia South Carolina. Other than that, I'm with it.
Any further questions for the owners? Mr. Bryant and Ms. Katie Brown.
We're pleased that you're doing this.
Yeah, we do thank you.
I would be pleased, just like I know the NPA is due to do, so they really have been getting on a little bit of a hurry for this. It proved actually a positive.
And thank you for taking my PPH, too. That really made a difference in the community. Okay, thank you. Commissions, any further questions for Mr. Dyson for our turn over to the public? Hearing, okay, this is a public hearing. And we will allow anyone to come up and speak for or against the bread of this petition. Come forward, please, take your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor O'Ton. Need my address?
Yes, ma'am.
To 114, because, and angry, also 16062. And angry, I'm not questioning any. Now, Henry, uh, I'm not questioning anything about the building. I was wondering though, what the rate to be for the persons coming into occupy one of their, uh, building?
Runway.
Runway.
Yeah.
We've not nailed it down, but around a hundred is what we're looking at. But it should be fairly affordable, is what we're hoping.
Just saying, my social security.
Anyone else to step forward to speak for or against the President of this petition? Please take your name and address, please, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Albert, I'm at twenty-four Union Street. Just wanna express my support of this project. I'm glad to see something positive being known in the building. And I know that old time will get behind that.
Anyone else? Commissioner, um, what's your ruling, please, with this slide?
I'm like, I'm sure that we approved the conditional use petition number nine two seven five nineteen. Should we say?
Motion second for the approval of, of petition number nineteen eleven. Are there any further discussion? Hearing, uh, Madam Clerk, please call to vote.
Commissioner Casey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Grant Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Howard, how do you vote?
Yes. So, that motion carries naturally. Thank you so very much for that. Um, Dice, thank you. All right, item number four, because item to consider for approval. Consider approval of our October sixteen, thousand nineteen session, regular, scheduled meeting minutes. Uh, Commissioner take a minute to approve and item take a motion afterwards.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Mo, pardon, motion second for approval of, of minutes, motion and record scheduled meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing, uh, all people, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, consider approval of financial report as of September thirty, two thousand nineteen. Ms. Kathy Mills, our financial representative, presented.
Okay, you have it for you, is September thirty, two thousand nineteen, on page two. Um, this is the first quarter of this year, so we're twenty-five percent of the year. Uh, on page one, revenues are not as well as expenditures over. But we have a deficit of one point nine million for the first quarter. But as I tell you every year, that's fixed, that ten million we start rolling in and, um, I type it right in, and particularly with City of Detroit. And, uh, this is predictable every year, you know, where we are at this point. So, nothing to think about that. We do have cash out, several two million dollars. One point four million is special two thousand one. And six hundred and seventy-five thousand is a prime sale. I did not put the interest term on here that was mentioned in the finance committee meeting. So, um, the interest term for the first order to the general fund was eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Just for your connection. Looking at our loss numbers, we are up six point six, two percent for the year today on our loss income. Titled that, more tax, we're down forty-one point eighty-four percent. We discussed that in the finance committee, so I pulled some information. Actually, our percentage has gone up in two thousand nineteen. So, it went from fifty-one point five eight percent to fifty-two point four four percent. And in fact, in July, the law changed to a ninety percent, sixty-five percent, supposedly. State gave thirty-five percent. So, um, looking at these numbers dropping, um, Mr. Brown, I looked at the parcels and they do appear to be down, but I'm not sure if that counts for the total amount. I did get an email earlier this year from a gentleman with, um, um, with GMA, who was lobbyist, wanting us to give them our information for July two thousand nineteen, for December two thousand nineteen, he just got me up. Wanting to know if we were seeing any detriment trends in the change of the cash formula. So, I'm not sure why it's going to sixty-five percent, but I'm still seeing it dropping. So, I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow, I can get in touch with him. Because apparently they were anticipating some of this was gonna happen, since they're requesting an information. But it sounds a bit like sixty-five percent is more than fifty-two percent. So, I'm not sure what they changed exactly, but they must have changed something in underlying form. So, I'm going to talk to him and see if we can determine, you know, what it is exactly. And certainly, we're aware of those, it's a detriment of, of seeing a drop in our, our tax. Um, on page two, we'll see our loss six point. We have a total cash balance of six million dollars. For the first quarter, we had ten million interest of thirty thousand eight hundred and sixty million dollars. Um, you can see the first two columns of the budget for the entire period of loss between this remaining of two thousand seventeen to seven or two thousand twenty. Um, the second column shows how much we've spent since the beginning of this loss on various projects, how much of the late, the top half of the page. And then we have the budget at the third column, just for current this period being thirty-two thousand. And the actual current this period expenditures for the current year. And I know he promises every month, but those numbers are a bit different for going back. A lot of things that were in this pay at the right now for those projects. On the third page, we've got a loss five. Um, we still have a balance of one million four hundred and thirty-two thousand. And that fund earned eight thousand dollars of interest for the first quarter. The only project we still have outstanding is that for nine seven four million three hundred and four thousand dollars. The balance technically, how many for that project is a million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. North Street Commons, there's been no activity this year. The balance of cash is three hundred and thirty-two thousand. That turned for a thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars of interest for a quarter. Roosevelt Harris Multi Purpose Center, we'll see, we have, um, grant line, thirty thousand dollars. We've transferred the end of the general fund at this point, twenty-five thousand dollars. Our budget for the entire year to transfer end of the general fund is nine thousand one hundred and sixty-three. So, we are a little more than a quarter of what we budgeted, but, um, I anticipate that will level out as, as grant funds come in, although there's some, some more programming to do. Cash balance there is approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, there's very little interest made in that fund because it, it doesn't keep balance. We, um, publicly expenditures, it doesn't, it's very difficult to balance. Um, page four, the sanitation fund. We'll see expenditures year to date and, um, the building revenue year to date. Having that amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Our balance, um, and in cash is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That fund earned two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars of interest. Say our sanitation filling, um, we remained at approximately under twenty-one thousand dollars each month that we paid the public for trash picking up. And then we have illegal revenues and street companies that are showing to me that around twenty-five hundred dollars. Still for utility fund, um, I think I had mentioned to you before that we are paying, we are having to subsidize that fund for the first few months. We have now collected, um, sanitation fee or store water fees, I'm sorry, that, um, I will be paying the general fund back the amount we have, um, along those store water utility. And we see my cash balance to the storage fund one has a negative seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, but that's not really true. That was a, a day lag in between when we wrote the checks and when I covered the dollar round. But in any case, all the money in storage fund one, there's generally about twelve hundred dollars for that. Uh, it's all in one big lump sum at storage fund one. And then I had allocated on the books and I put money in for it. So, if that were, if that were both true. Additional information, we didn't have any expenses for natural control, traffic control, or, um, recreation, art services, you know, this sector. And then the last page is the, um, city resident bank, which is basically the resident warrant center. And as a typical expenditures, um, we are still working on our water sewage bill. They had, um, purchased a fifth dip before last year and talks with them, still what's going on there. Um, to say with this current month, it probably back to a hundred and seven dollars, which is not a worry. So, um, we were in discussions with the property that they're, that they're trying to spend that.
Can we ask this question? Um, you said we had no expenditure for recreation for the month of September?
I had, I had no expenditures for the, um, you know, normally I report here, but we pay for the building and the pool, those things that are managed by the community for us that we had to pay because they're about a hundred dollars. We have to pay the, the maintenance or?
I was, I was concerned about, uh, our children that participated in football and basketball. That's like, that's what happened in the falls.
We, they would bill us about one quarter and we would just pay bills them. Uh, don't, to show, to, 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 to just pay this money. They don't, they don't, yeah, they only send it one quarter.
Okay.
You know, or when, in the height of the season.
We can add a, we can shift the line. Any further questions to the bills concerning our financial report?
So, so on, on that mishap with that, that, um, order bill?
Yes.
Um, when they sent us the bill, so are they taking it out, out of, of the, of the?
Not yet, we're still talking for now. I, I think I'm gonna have to call, um, my councilor, or just talk to them. And, uh, they weren't very forthcoming, so I'm gonna have to get involved and see if I can go higher. Um, she was talking to my customer service and they, they were like, you know, it's just a bill, but. No, there was nothing on it to indicate there was any leak at all. Um, they told her that there was no, there were no notes on the account that looked, that looked like there was any problem with the account. Like, so obviously it must be our fault, is what they said to us. But, um, we were, we really did a process, looking, we had plenty of bills during that time. We didn't, so why did we go from four thousand one month and then the next month they dropped it back to a hundred dollars? I mean, if there was a leak or something, I don't think it would break this stuff. But I would think that would be a little more than that.
Too low.
That, that's, that's not a, oh, God, I can even look at the percentage of the increase. Yeah, there, yeah. And generally, when we do see a bill, if we do, it's happening previously. Um, they don't have an annex to it, to it for, I guess, I don't know, just a load or something, whatever. Or I was nailed, I don't, you know, okay, okay, so nailed. And, you know, like, okay, we realized something might be wrong, but then still they're like, I'm gonna pile them aside. Okay, wait, that's, I got a person one time. But they don't show anything on their records that show that there was anything unusual. So, um, we're going further than that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go skip it that, um, if I see, if I know that you not have a bill of that magnitude.
Yeah.
Um, and, and being with the, uh, the quasi governmental, um, entities. I mean, I, I would think it would be a little more, um, of communication. Does it say, do you think we could do like that?
Yes, well, their determination is, we, we should, file a warrant, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ask the, the customer service. We have tickets, or we have tickets on the outside building that are not locked or secured. And it's a request by Lawrence and I won't be able to.
I'm not sure to be, I mean, either, there's security inside a loft.
Yes.
So, if they were, I know you're concerned that someone may turn on out, or stick it in there for a couple of days. That's not necessarily possible, that it would be inside the loft of security. So, if that, that staff member, maybe a kid or something, etc. I would agree with that. It's, it's more research, I don't know if you can solve it or not. And I know the one thing to look at is, is say, four thousand dollars worth of shoes. And then you go to the next month, and you, and it really was too high reading. When the reading should show that it went backwards and water meters all go backwards. And if you show them before, then it's gonna say that that amount of water they had out for the years. So, we're gonna have to look at that.
Like I said, we don't show where, okay, repairs done. Right. So.
Yes, yes, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I miss you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mills? Ms. Mills, I, I continually ask the question, um, about store water utility fund. Uh, last year, uh, on our lease, we had a store water utility fee. And I was trying to figure out, like, if he split that in, maybe, collecting.
Okay, um, you know, we started out, we had the three months, the quarter, once the four months, before we started collecting any money. And we are looking at, at this year, cutting some costs out of there so that we can go forward with the access to cover those first few months of the year without having to loan ourselves money from the general fund. But we have, uh, we're gonna tie it back now, we have it running now. But I, I understand what you're saying, but it, it's really more of a cash flow issue than it is a shortage. It's, the cash is coming in, it's going away.
I just wanna keep around that because I'm sure our citizens realize, you know, they're being, have to pay that fee or the whatever money they're using for. Store water, um, drains, and all of the stuff like that. So, we gotta be diligent and make sure that they know exactly what they're using for. Any other questions or comments? Hearing, uh, now, let me take a motion, please. Make a motion to, to the financial board as presented.
Second.
Your problem, motion second, for the, to receive the financial report as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing, uh, all people, on that table, please raise your right hand. Oppose that same side, look like, like, uh, that fashion, and thank you so much, Ms. Mills. All right, item number six, consider approval of contract and maintenance of Long Brook for the construction of T Street landfill. Governor Atkinson, our, our senior engineer, and, uh, Brooklyn Rachel is presenting. Sir, how are you?
Good, good, I'm young.
All right.
This item, and I actually finished two contract documents of, for construction of the T Street landfill closure. Um, y'all know the overall history of the T Street landfill. Um, most recent history, the landfill ownership group, which is the city, Georgia Pacific, and Hercules Corporation, hired TRC Environmental to design and handle closure plans. That design was approved by the EPD land protection branch in October of twenty eighteen. Um, following that approval, um, TRC ownership went forward with soliciting construction bids. And it turned out that Long Wolf Resources was the donor. And the group entered a construction contract with Long Wolf. They then began mobilizing and started site preparation work in August of this year. During that time, between approval of the landfill, approval of design by EPD and the mobilization, the local EPD office, the coastal office stepped in and has required additional more substantial erosion control measures because of the proximity to the marsh and the weapon there that's down here. Um, that's the first change order in this, is an increase in cost of fifty-one thousand dollars for the, the upgrade or the, or the increased more substantial erosion control measures on site. And then secondly, during that time, as the contract. And then secondly, during that time, as the contract began mobilization began work, wetlands delineation was completed, which is common for any kind of work here near the marsh. And that, that delineation, when they delineated that marsh line, it showed that there is some waste downstream or below that jurisdictional marsh line. Basically, there's waste in the marsh. Mainly concrete, steel, that kind of thing, inert, inert waste. But DNR, local DNR office, construction, I mean, Coastal Resources Division, has stepped in and they will not approve the determination and allow the project to go forward until a solution is reached to either remove that waste from the marsh or determine how to handle that waste. So until that resolution is reached on how to handle that, we demobilize the contractor rather than having them sit there doing nothing, paying them for personnel and equipment sitting on the site doing nothing. We demobilize them from the site. So that's the second change order here, is their demobilization cost, as well as a cost for continued monitoring of those erosion and sedimentation control measures while they're demobilized. EPD requires us to monitor that site and make sure there's no sedimentation issues going into the marsh during that time they're demobilized. So then, it's a lot to take in. It's, it's sort of complicated and confusing. But basically, we have two change orders. Change order number one is for the increased erosion control measures. Change order number two is demobilization cost and monitoring of that erosion control while the resolution or probably come to resolution of how to handle the waste that's in the marsh. So, um, the, the total cost of these two change orders is seventy thousand dollars, or right at seventy thousand dollars. That will be paid by the ESTRO account, which all three groups contribute equally to me. About three point six million dollars in that ESTRO account right now. So it's not, would not be a contribution due from us right now. The city budgeted a million dollars in our general fund during this past year to contribute into that ESTRO account. Today, we've only contributed eight hundred and six thousand of that million dollars we budgeted. So we're, we're running a little under budget just for our, our budget purchases right now. But, but like I said, that, that seventy thousand dollars is, is ultimately split equally between the three ownership groups and, but it will be paid from that ESTRO account that all three groups contributed. The TRC, the consultant on the project, had recommended approval of these two change orders. And the other two groups, on Georgia Pacific and Hercules, have also both approved and signed this change order. And I discussed this with the finance committee at their last meeting last week. And they, the finance committee approved these two change orders.
Is, is there a point at which the design plan should have gone through the land protection branch of the EPD or the DNR? Because if the project just got started and then all of a sudden you've got this whole marsh land jurisdictional thing, right, right off of the approval of the, the plan design, it just doesn't seem right.
Right. Yeah, I think one problem there was, I think the anticipation was that there would be a little communication within EPD. And when the land protection branch in Atlanta approved this, that they would stand up with the coastal division down here and not allow the coastal division to step in and make additional requirements on top of the design that they already got. So I think it was the lack of communication in there at one portion.
We have to take that off, though. I mean, it, it seems like if somebody had done their job when they were supposed to do their job, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Well, right. I, I think probably there could have been a delineation done a little earlier in the process, too. It may have, it may have helped on the, on the second side.
I just find it difficult that we, that's not part of the whole process. I'm not faulting you, obviously, but it just seems not very well executed or not very well done. Something's not right. It's a progress. It's an after the fact, they review the plan and the design, how it's gonna be done, and then they go, oh, we need, we need a deeper jurisdiction, we need the jurisdictional line to be deeper. We need, we need to have your protective measures in place.
So how long is the, this company gonna be demobilized?
Six months or whatever. With, this, this change order includes up to six months for the monitoring of the erosion control device, I'd like to say. We, we certainly hope that it doesn't take that long. We met on the site, we spent most of the morning today, walking the site, trying to, you know, come up with a plan of action to go forward, to get that, or a plan how to address that waste that is in the marsh, and how to get that in front of EPD and provide the proposed resolution to them.
How did no one see that before?
It's, but it's, it's really not easy to see because it, it is right there at the marsh line. There's, there's nothing that's obviously way out there in the marsh. There's a huge ton of trash out there in the marsh. There's some wastes that goes maybe a couple of feet beyond where the line was delineated. So, you know, the line could have been delineated, possibly if somebody had blanketed it further down, which would have included this. So it's, it's just a matter of where that line was delineated. But it is not an obvious, like, trash from way out in the marsh and like that. It's just kind of the way that, that edge of the landfill kind of crept, crept along over time, I guess.
So we're gonna, we're gonna get hit with some type of contamination issues?
No, no, nothing like that. In fact, it looks like the group is kind of thinking that the best thing to do is to propose to EPD and DNR to leave what's there. There, it's like I said, it's not hazardous, it's inert. Most like concrete and steel products, just not hurting things. Been there for, for years. I think you'd do more damage. The group is thinking that you would do more damage trying to reclaim that and have to restore the marsh than to just leave it there. But that would not anticipate any kind of fees or, or fines for contamination right now.
Um, one last question, I want to, the, the cost, the cost I saw in here addressed the fifty thousand dollars, fifty one thousand dollars. And I can see the twenty thousand specifically mentioned. Is that the twelve hundred per month? Is that how that's being?
Right. There's twelve hundred per month for six months, which is seventy-two hundred dollars. And that is the monitoring of the erosion control during the demobilization now. But then there's also a twelve thousand eight hundred eighty dollar demobilization cost.
Where does that show?
That's on page two of change order number three. There are two change orders here, number one and number three. They, there's been three change orders. Number two was denied during review of the consulting. So this is number one and number three. Number one, like I said, is fifty one thousand dollars. And number three is the second page, number three. So twelve eight eighty is the new version, where six times twelve hundred, so it's not having a total of seventy-one thousand dollars. Here the concrete, it was out here, we let concrete put out there, not city.
I, I don't know, have no idea when it was put there, who put it there, or anything. I don't know how you ever determined that.
I can tell you what they had out there. They had a million and two hundred thousand tires out there one time. I'm putting, putting the wall up. But the concrete came later on. It ended, it ended after.
But it's not land, so we got it.
We got it. That was the truck, you got a little funny.
But what, meaning for the, for the change order to be that, we're not responsible for the entire seventy thousand. We pay one third.
One third, yeah.
We have to pay one third.
That's right.
So I just made a mistake.
And it is not. Yes, sir.
You wanna make sure, too, is if there's a reserve there, it's always gonna take here, there's three point six million dollars.
I don't have to break that in front of me, but I believe there is a tendency included when we made our contribution of eight hundred and six to cover the costs of the contract. I do believe that includes a tendency.
Let's hope it don't take six months before we give it back.
That's right. We're, I'm planning to do something in front of EPD as early as next week, trying to propose a resolution to this. And then as long as they, if they will approve it, we won't be back, back to work.
So do they have to prove the amended plan design now?
They will. But that'll be, that'll be done.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any further questions for Ms. Abelson? Well, I was willing to lecture, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I'd like to motion to approve the contract amendment for loan resources for the construction of T Street landfill closure. Any further discussion, comments?
Only other question on that is, what's the process now with the, the other two entries?
Paying no tariffs and that's it.
And further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, this is very similar to what we're going through with the SCP. When you are told with the night that in nineteen ninety, maybe a million hundred and thirteen fifty yards, and they just stopped, you know, and we're stuck with that. This is, this is very, 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 you've got EPD, you've got EPD, they're all, and you can't play.
And you just said, I was gonna ask a question, I didn't do it, but my question was, are they requiring more bus and our sales and the hills and sun? Got a question.
You got a question, you did.
I'm not sure I have a big proposal involved in hills any time soon.
But we can't, you know, in the city, no, no.
Well, I think so, too. I think so. Our citizens were affected with, with the SCP thing. And, you know, the county received fifty million dollars. However, we would see. Anyhow, any further questions for Ms. Abelson on the contract amendment for loan resources? As I said, your problem goes to second. So any further discussion? Here in the, on the paper, you mentioned my name. A motion carries and I can sign it. All right, item number eight. Relocation of conditional use position of fourteen ten thirty-one fourteen Johnson Street Auto Repair Garage. Bridge eyes, as presented again.
We have before you the review, as you said, of conditional use permit fourteen ten. There is a typo. The history on December seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, not, I'm sorry, this property was granted a conditional use permit for a repair garage at thirty-one fourteen Johnson Street. The approval that you had in your back end was limited by the following conditions. One, that all match up with substantial compliance with the plan. Also attached in here, that had, two, that the repair of all automobiles must occur fully within enclosed vehicles, sorry, enclosed buildings. And then we know open storage of wrecked vehicles and dismantled parts or other materials visible beyond the premises. And the third condition was that if automobiles that are wrecked or dismantled are stored outside and obey the fence of at least six feet in height must be installed prior to any of these vehicles being stored outside. Since the granting of that conditional use permit, this business has had repeated violations and warnings and has continued to openly store junk vehicles on the property as well as adjacent properties and in the public street and lane, violating the terms of the conditional use permit. I've asked code enforcement officer Chris Jones to give me more information for us about those violations, if you're interested.
Yes, let me give you a brief overview of how we dealt with this property. Of course, we've had the public board three times in the past two years. All plans have been down guilty. I think more than twenty counts of open storage of junk vehicles. We received complaints on this property from every adjacent property over that is an occupied building. Of course, we have our complaints because they're not being used. To put you in perspective, you know where at, I H A J Auto, Johnson Circle. The lane there is continuously blocked because there are rare vehicles in that. The property they committed to storing vehicles on, they're not really using. They can store about six vehicles in that area. They have, they have, they have one of the two, they have one of the two vehicles they were running at the time. So it's a good capacity issue. It's causing multiple external use. The blocking lane, the use of the tire circle for storing vehicles. It's leading to other cases. We have other violators in that area. They're providing only one. It is making it very difficult to identify exactly who's responsible for what. So our goal, frankly, is to source compliance. And I didn't believe that bringing this continues to deport was going to do that. Perhaps we make some money, but that doesn't work out really here to clean up the city. And I don't think that continuing, that owner deport would have produced a good outcome.
Thank you. So we did take this application to the Planning and Appeals Commission at their last meeting. And the Planning and Appeals Commission discussed and is recommending, oh, to go back to what they discussed, excuse me, they spoke about salvaging vehicles to be removed from the street, appropriate screening, and the fence needed to be installed. And the applicant seems to have outrun this location and needs to look elsewhere in the city for a larger and more appropriate location for the business. The Planning and Appeals Commission voted to recommend to the, to you all, that the conditional use permit fourteen ten, be revoked as of March first, two thousand twenty, which gives the applicant about six weeks to, six months to either clean up or find a new location in the city. And the applicant is here, excuse me. And the applicant is here this time.
Okay, questions for on your left?
How many citations have we given this, this? I think the last time, and I might refer to Chris, the last time you recorded five and twelve.
And three, three of them went to court.
We took the court three times on more than fifteen total counts. And I haven't associated all of those.
Have they asked any payment plan?
I do say, yes.
You said that the owner was here?
Yes, sir.
I'd be interested to, to, to hear.
How many, sir?
Okay, so you saw, with salt?
Yes, one of the, our shelf.
So, oh, you, is this a body shop?
Wait, so this is a repair shop, new area, right?
So why you have so many citations, uh, you know, what's, what's?
My business is out of, out of hand, I just have too much business.
So are you presently looking for another location?
I, I actually am, yes, I actually repurchased, uh, the Omen Kinna lot, and we're looking to build a bigger shop there.
Yeah, about three forty one?
No, no, Omen Kinna shop, you know, we can deliver it on the road, sure.
Yeah, oh, oh, oh.
Sure, sure. Yes, sir, there's a car lot, excellent.
It's a salvation, or we, okay.
So we just took, we just, that's, 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 that's. Would you just, is that, did we just approve them for that location?
Yes, sir, a different owner, yes. Right, it was, uh, a potential new business partner.
Yeah, yes, yeah, he's, he's the owner, he part of the lot.
So is he working on it to make it compliant with what the regulations are, and what it's like, or here being able to body shop, repair?
We have seen the, adding to that property, kind of made marked improvements already, with the parking lot, the fence, uh, the signs, so we are options of that.
So, since we, we do a revocation of this, what would that mean to the, to the owner?
It would mean that they would need to find a new location.
Would you say that?
Well, that's a different person, that's, that's, that's a different animals right now, or, or, or compared to now, two different animals right now. Keep, keep, one animal, you said, yes.
There seems to be about four, if I have a chance, from our.
No, there's only two.
But there's only two now, two that are moving?
No, well, just me, initially, and my cousin, they work together, and my cousin's out the picture, just me and initially, yeah.
So, no problem, we're dealing with this one right here, that, that's, we'll let this, we'll handle this.
The building's on, uh, shop, uh, the road, is where you're proposing to move to once?
Once I build a new, a new garage.
Well, we're going to deal with this petition right here, and, and we'll, uh, the other part, um, has no reference to, to this right here, right here.
My concern is that, I know you said it had no relation, but my concern is, if we get the same type of situation on the road, we have at, at Johnson Circle, we're going to create some problems.
Well, hoping that the place there is larger for.
It is not for you.
But I understand what we're talking about, is, is addressing future concerns, but it's not comparable to what we're dealing with right now, handle, let, let's handle this, get this application done, and we look at what has been permitted for usage, what's coming forth already, because we've already approved something. And so we need to go back and make sure now that we have this additional information, make sure that what has been approved is comparable to what's being proposed, this is a separate issue, get the revocation done, let's move on, look at what we've already approved for this other location, so we, so now we can go, we can be proactive instead of being back before he ever gets there. Then we know what we're in for and what we're looking for, and so we make sure that we have a place that we've already approved there is adequate for what's to come.
And as you all know, uh, this commission has requested the code enforcement to go on for six months, and then annually for all conditional use permit applications will be forwarded, and we are doing that.
So, you were just saying about March first?
The, the Planning and Appeals Commission wanted to give the applicant time to, um, find a new location or clean up the property that he has, um, so they recommended that the relocation be effective March first.
Revocation?
Yes.
Well, even, this is, this is my, my statement, you know, that even if we live in March, I think this cleanup needs to start.
Yeah, I think we can give it a lot of March first, I think it's, I think it's a good law.
The guy's, the guy's, what's your answer? Uh, how much time do you think you need to get this situation cleaned up? If you could, if you could.
Yeah, about three months, three, four months.
All right.
Nine days.
Nine days.
For some file, for some file, I don't know what to say.
A day certain, a day certain, for nine days, for, yeah, three, three months off, is that right, the March date, three, nine days off the March date, they're, um, they, um, they're planning for. It's in February, it's, 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 it's.
That'd be the first to the Navy Tent in February, or almost, or October.
At least same amount of minutes. Any more questions for Mr. Solo?
And, and we would say, we would say that only because of the extended wave of circumstances, that, that is a history demonstrated of violations.
Well, I'm trying to understand what the surrounding properties that also seem to have issues, aren't they?
Because I'm not one of the triggers to traffic, and both lanes coming to the, to the, um, to Johnson Circle, as H M H as well, during the day, they have cars parked on both sides of the street, which on the main, she can only drive through, and they love the whole street.
Like say, you some way to. Well, I heard, they don't, they don't, I know you're afraid of it, but they say it's so money. Anyhow, um, Commissioner, as I said, in further question for Solo, what would you, uh, do when you do this? Thank you, Solo.
Thank you.
Thanks, any further comments, things to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Code enforcement, anything?
Uh.
Commissioner, we have something for us, uh, we've heard, uh, from, from code enforcement and from, from the dice.
Yeah, I have a question, and this will be in parts to, now to make the motion, um, you know, for the revocation, the effective date might be February fifteenth, let's just say, but then are there other conditions that need to be part of the revocation between now and then? Do we, do we need to put any conditions in there? Or some, you got it?
Totally.
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
Be issuing another code enforcement, or have another code enforcement violation until, um, I guess it's just putting some probationary periods, if they don't have another incident during the time.
He's trying to clean it up.
Get out. Oh, until he's cleaning it out, uh, getting it out, uh, that would be the only condition, I guess, uh, I mean, I think that might be something way to be cleaned up and moved out, but, um, I don't think we want to see additional code enforcement violations during the process of the moving, so even if the business goes on as usual, we're still with the expectation that there will be a rest of code enforcement violations. So I think it would be like a motion to say that, uh, they need to come into compliance with code immediately, and should they not do so, that within the next ninety days, or, I think it's hard for the craft to push it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if we're going to make them come into compliance immediately, then why couldn't they be gone, I mean, I mean, if.
Right, that's right, I think there's a balance in there, that, you could make it as easy as just saying that the C U B we revoked on February fifteenth, if they are coming into compliance with code, and that'd be it, but if you want to add, I don't know what additional conditions you might want to add in there, but it could be just a simple sentence, they have to February fifteenth, and that's fine.
How much time does it take, Solo?
Yes, it's going to be hard for me to move out, but. This, this is kind of, it's going to be hard for me to move out, have stuff outside, and, and of course, if I have to look outside, I'm not going to, then that's going to give somebody else a reason to call the code enforcement, so that's kind of hard for me to move out and stay clean outside of, so it's, it's going to be hard for code enforcement, especially, I don't, I know who's calling the code enforcement.
So I think that's making me clean, um, revocation on February fifteenth, if, 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 if.
And I think that's.
Right, so do we, if we need, would it make sense to stipulate that, um, the cleaning up the property would start with, to outline areas, I mean, if he's already spilling over, and it's creating other problems, that would be the best first place to start, is getting those vehicles gone.
Well, now, there's, there's problems now, it's not just, you know, my car's not, see, I've had, and the code enforcement told me personally, and with several witnesses there, that I can park my cars on an adjacent property, so I can stop traffic going through, and empty lot into the next street. So they told me, as long as my cars have a tag insurance on, I can park my cars on an adjacent street, so I can stop traffic.
Well, I think we need to just do what the A C attorneys asked us to do, is to give you until February fifteenth to, uh, to, to be in compliance, and during that period of time, uh, we will have code enforcement, we won't keep giving you code violations until, if you'll come into compliance. That, that's what I, here, obviously, attorney's recommended.
That's something hard, because as I'm moving out.
You move on February fifteenth, you have.
That's, that's, wow.
Yeah, but here, three months, were you saying, between the three months, they're going to give you a license?
No, they don't give them all.
Oh, they won't, yeah, yeah, I think that's what's the original plan, was, I think, that between the six months, you're going to have, right, come out of here, yeah, that's what the, the original plan was.
I would say.
If it was not done by that date, then.
That was the original plan.
To be totally, and he would totally.
Over date of compliance.
Okay, do we, who understands each other, thank you, Mr. Solo, thank you for your, your comment, go ahead, sit back down.
To be totally removed from the property, that being certain.
I think that, not that we're going to, the, the way that it's ordered in here, it's, it's, uh, uh, we probably, that's the rule of C U B fourteen, that's ineffective.
But the issue, the, wait a minute, the issue before us is a revocation, it's not giving him a license, it's a revocation, that means that we are totally revoking his business license and the C U B that we have given, that's why I say, what I say, to make his total removal, if we're not wanting to have him to get any more code enforcement violations, then by date certain, February fifteenth, twenty twenty, he will be removed totally, that's everything he has on that property, business closed, license surrendered, all of that stuff done by February fifteenth, twenty twenty, and we, what we are revoking, the, the effectiveness of the revocation as of twen, of two fifteen, twenty twenty, you do not go beyond that date, he has until that date, we're giving him that amount of time to get himself together, to get all of his stuff off the property, but as of date certain, two fifteen, twenty twenty, the revocation is effective, he can't operate no more, he can't, he's not on that property anymore, it's done.
That's what revocation means.
Revocation means it's been revoked, we got, we don't have the privilege of that, of that anymore.
Ms. Dice, you understand now what, what it means, say it?
Yes, sir.
But Solo, you don't understand what it means, say it?
Well, I think in the, the. On the last meeting, you just said if I came to compliance to it, that was, I was going to be able to, to keep my license, well, that's what the idea was, that's what they told me in the last meeting, that's what they told me.
This is what I said, I'm against, that's why, that's the question, had you located ways, you said, yes, Snow Street, so if that's the case, are you going to operate two separate businesses?
Well, we're thinking about just moving to one, but if we can't, then operating both in two separate businesses and locations?
That, that, that's not what's before us, I mean, that's why I said, that's why I told you, oh, get your mind off of what he's proposing, ain't something, those are two separate issues, revocation is revocation, before us tonight is a revocation, that means that we are revoking what we have given him the privilege of having, no longer has that privilege, revoking, gone, bye-bye, no more.
Well, they told me if I, if I came in order, I said, I was going to be able to keep my license.
That was a recommendation, and this is more based on license.
Okay. That wasn't going to mean in the last, last meeting. That's what we, that's what we, that's what we.
Yeah, not too easy, too, so, that's why I said, there, there has to be an incentive, that's why I pointed out, there's a history, there's a pattern, a continuation, um, I hate to be a harsh word, blatant disregard, pretty much is what it is, blatant disregard for the codes that are in place, because of history has been established here, so now, we are at this point, revocation, that's why we're here, because there has been a blatant disregard for the codes, even after coming to court, there has still been a continuation and a historical pattern established, that even though you pay it, and I'm just saying, to me, it appears to be that it's cheaper for you to continue paying the code violations than it is for you to find an adequate facility for you to operate, if you do.
Yes, but the thing is that, I don't, like I said, I bought, we, we own market, uh, this part, we bought from the road street, uh, the thing is, if we revoked my license, I might not be able to reapply for my license.
Definitely, I, I would think, that it shouldn't be, because it's at another location.
And when we use the term license, I mean, I think that's a big, it's just conditioning, it's attached to the property, he can still operate the business with his license, so he runs it so long, as, even if he lives to the location, if he is not in violation of code enforcement.
Yes, absolutely.
The only thing that we revoked would be conditional, he said, is attached to the property.
Thank you, I, I, I'm.
So you keep your license, that's all.
Yes. Well, you, I, 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 for dealing with, I use the term now, is that the condition useful, that you're not, but that's the center.
You would not be able to use to, 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 to.
Okay, so I think we all got it up here, now, it's, it's clear as mud again, I see, uh, we'll muddle through it, uh, Commissioner, I picked up on the standard, I've got it, standing for my city attorney, on my, on my, and the whole director as well, uh, so, if we look at, um, I entertain a motion, I think there's no further discussion.
Commissioner, I have a motion for revocation of the conditional use permit at thirty one fourteen Johnson Circle, um, Johnson, uh, Johnson Circle. Johnson Circle, um, effective on February fifteenth.
Johnson Circle, um, effective on February fifteen, twenty twenty, and that by that time, the occupant will have all vehicles and material removed from this location.
Second.
Let me probably go for second for, uh, revocation of different petition number fourteen-ten at thirty-one fourteen Johnson Circle, I dare you further discussion. The date certain is effective date of February fifteen, twenty twenty. Any further discussion? Here in the Hall of Fame, please raise your right hand. That most careful, thank you, Dykes, thank you for us. Okay, we now, as item eight A. Which is, um, considered approval of that huge community development block grant, disaster recovery home order, rehabilitation, reconstruction program, sub-recipient agreement. Mr. Travis Stevens, let's present.
Uh, first of all, good afternoon, well, good evening, Mr. Stevens.
Evening.
Want to make sure that everyone has a copy of the contract, um, I've talked about a couple times in the last week. Uh, so, uh, for the sake of time, but for clear information, I would ask that, um, you got to maybe move to page number four here, and I'll summarize the first two pages. Um, the city of Brunswick and the state of Georgia has been working together now for at least a year and a half to try to bring CBGDR, um, grant funding to the city of Brunswick. Um, the state had been given sixty-five million dollars, and out of that sixty-five million dollars, the city of Brunswick, Kingsland, and the city of Albany, zip code specific, has been granted the opportunity to use about eighty percent of those dollars, um, in order to get our cities back one track or to make our citizens whole because of Hurricane Irma. So the reason why, if you guys would just go ahead and move to, um, what is it, page four, is just so we can kind of break down the numbers, right? And that's really what we're asking you to kind of look at the numbers that we're given, and to agree to the contract that we're currently looking at right now. Um, the numbers that, and the way the numbers come out to me is, out of the sixty-five million dollars that the state was granting by HUD, about thirty million dollars of these funds, um, will be allocated amongst the three cities, um, to create a program of major minor repair of homes here in the city of Brunswick, specifically in the zip code three-one-five-two-zero. So there's gonna be about four things that we can do. We can, um, repair, we can reconstruct, all right? We can raise the homes that are in the flood zone areas, citizens will have an opportunity to do that, and the citizens will also have an opportunity to harden their homes against any future, um, cases of disaster, referring to floods and hurricanes and things of that nature. So it's very important to understand that the way the city, the state has awarded the funds to all three of these organizations is through a competition of sort, which just basically says, here's your thirty million dollars, but you better be incredibly efficient and effective in the way that you guys are going to administer this grant to your city, so it's first time, first served. With that said, you will see the second, the second number that says, our allocation goal in our department is to meet the threshold of about fifteen million dollars, all right, fifteen million dollars. The way we kind of came up with that number is saying, um, as of right now, we have a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars to spend per home, but the average number's gonna be about seventy-five thousand dollars, we can play with those numbers. That doesn't mean that every single home will get a hundred thousand dollar or seventy-five thousand dollar, um, renovation or rehab or reconstruction on their home. What it means is that those, if we come into a situation of that now, then we will probably, we will have the ability to get that right. And the second thing I want you guys to also understand is that this, um, the disaster recovery dollars are dollars that will make a citizen whole. So if they receive any funds from FEMA, if they receive any funds from their insurance company, and they say, for instance, the damage was twenty thousand dollars, but they were only made whole with ten thousand dollars, our goal is to, um, cover that additional gap of about ten thousand dollars. Once again, uh, our allocation goal to spend is gonna probably be about fifteen million dollars. Um, if we get above that number, that's great, all right? Once again, first time, first served. If we don't have enough individuals that are participating, which I'm pretty sure we will have enough individuals to participate, there was a gap in the, um, in the action plan that the state submitted, and we were able to, um, just kind of play with that gap. Once again, if I can't get a citizen approved from the, um, reconstruction portion, if I can't get them approved for the renovation portion, I can definitely get them approved through the house hardening portion, which means that, uh, no citizen left behind is the goal here when we're trying to create these programs.
House hardening?
Yes, a house hardening, which just basically means things like, um, making sure there's a new roof or windows, anything that will.
Kind of, kind of like weatherization.
Um, extreme weatherizations, yes, yes, extreme weatherizations. Um, which just basically means that, um, your roof will be, um, hurricane resistance probably up to a higher wind speed amount than we usually would be. Right. Exactly, exactly, exactly. Um, the great thing about also this, uh, about our allocation of our dollars is that unlike usual CBG dollars where we probably have to be in a situation where we have to probably be in a ninety, ten, or eighty, twenty situation, which just means that ninety percent or eighty percent of those dollars have to be spent in a low to moderate income community, this is gonna be a little different. Once again, we want to make sure that none of the citizens are left behind. We are dealing with a seventy-thirty split this time, which means that individuals that are above our, um, our median AMI, about two hundred percent, which put a household in, um, maybe ninety grand or so, can, can qualify, all right, to get their homes, um, hardened, they can get their own hardened, uh, they can get their homes renovated, whatever damage that was done to that particular, uh, piece of property. So, uh, these numbers, once again, is what we're looking at. Our allocation goes about fifteen million dollars, the, I just took the fifteen million dollars, divided them up into seventy-third allocation, or, um, probably about ten point four million dollars will go to individuals that kind of meet that financial burden of being taken care of, and about thirty percent, which is about four and a half million dollars, are gonna be above that number. Um, I wanted to bring in this mitigation portion of it right now, even though it's gonna be in the future, but I just want you guys to be, um, knowledgeable of it, just kind of know that this is going to come down. We don't really have to worry about necessarily running out of money in this particular program with disaster relief, because there's another twenty-six million dollars that has already allocated for us for things like mitigation. Um, the great thing about mitigation, mitigation goes a little bit further, uh, the unmet needs portion, which was the portion I talked about on the last page, had a lot to do with housing. Mitigation talks about everything that the city could possibly do to mitigate from, um, a disastrous, um, recovery in an event of, so, happen. So that's everything from stormwater drainage, that's everything from, um, shore mediation lines. There have been some very interesting developments when, when I went to visit, um, Louisiana, and so Texas are also kind of inviting us out. Puerto Rico is doing some awesome things also, and so they, they, they've kind of taken us on as their little brother to kind of walk us through this program and say, hey, listen, these are the kind of things that we got approved here in Puerto Rico, but guess what, you guys can do the exact same thing. Of course, that's a long dollar amount, because they have eighty-six million dollars, so we're kind of excited that they're taking us on to kind of help us out with that. Um, the biggest thing that I want you guys to also think about is that when we're thinking about this CBG disaster recovery money, we only get it one time, so it's almost like a one hit a quick. Now, um, we are going to ask the state to do some things and not think about our current situation, but kind of think about some things that we want to do in the future. And one of the things that I want to make note is thinking outside of the box and saying, hey, listen, how do we go ahead and increase the connectivity here in our community by being able to use it for broadband, and things of that kind of nature, all right? So, um, as you guys are thinking about it, and as you guys are out of your programs, it'd be wonderful to kind of think about what do we want our city to look like, and as long as we can categorize it under a form of mitigation, we could, um, put a mind on particularly doing that, all right?
Well, we'll just ask this question, with broadband, could you not look at adding broadband capacity as a measure of improving communication during a session?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, that falls clear under the, um, mitigation portion, because what we want to do is, we want to make sure that our first responders, um, have the ability to communicate very efficiently, effectively, and quite fast, all right? Uh, we also want our businesses to be up and running after a disaster relatively quickly also, um, you know, especially if we're gonna be talking about insurance companies, we're gonna be talking about contractors, we're gonna talk about, um, these individuals that we really truly depend upon to get our city back up and running, and our hospitals, and things like that, and to doctors' offices, so yes, absolutely.
So are there some things, I mean, especially if you're talking about, I think, outside the box, if we're, if we're looking at establishing, um, more preventative measures for rising sea level and having, that we, we could look at what those things would be?
Absolutely.
And incorporate them into this mitigation activity, sign of the dollar value, um, so that our insurance rates would drop because we're putting preventative measures on the lives.
Yes, absolutely. Um, just kind of to, to, to piggyback off of that question, one of the reasons why, um, Puerto Rico and I have kind of become, I guess, John with the hip, is that the concentrate are asking questions, one of the ways that they decide to have that is to create, to you and I, when we arrive to Puerto Rico, it looks like a beautiful borehole, but really what it is, is a new barrier that has kind of, um, risen the, 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 uh, the landline, uh, right? And so, it's, it's, it's a, it's a scientific wonder what's up under that's kind of keeping the floodwater, keeping the floodwater moving, but as you and I see it, as we walk it, it's like a borehole, it's kind of like a three-man borehole.
How much did this play in Puerto Rico again?
Oh, yeah, they, they have eighty-six million dollars to play with.
You said the?
Yeah.
The?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 so, uh.
Might be ready to go for a lot of eighty-six.
Yeah, well, we only have, you know, some thousand feet, but we, I think they can have it.
Yeah, um, our recent meeting with the Dutch consul.
That's right.
I mean, there's a lot of, they've been, they've been on working with Charleston on some of these land issues, so.
So the biggest thing about it, once again, um, it is disaster recovery, so for the next twelve months or so, twelve to sixteen months, um, our, our biggest focus is on how do we make our citizens whole, um, when it comes to their homes, and when it comes to their homes being damaged, um, with Irma. And, you know, after that, you know, our goal was to move directly into the remediation portions of it, so.
Travis, how, how, um, what's the words, that's hectic, will the process be for citizens to apply for this, this typical?
So, that's an interesting question, right? Just because we're, so not only are we going to be new to this, the state of Georgia is going to be new to it, and these are some things that we talked about early in the beginning, right? How do we make sure that this is a very clear, concise string line process, right? And so, one of the things that we've decided to do is, as far as the brand administration portion and the application portion, is to not take this on in-house, only because of the capacity issue, and make sure that we're hiring a firm that have enough individuals, um, that will help us through that string line process. Once again, the, the rules are strictly saying, you know, these homes would have been damaged and Irma, how do we kind of figure that out and fix that two and a half years later? So, um, they are saying that they are going to be as liberal as possible with, with whatever that, that tier is, that the, um, citizens have to get to in order to make sure that we can serve that person. I personally said, I appreciate that, but let me put this clause in when it comes to mitigation, and the house hardening was a backup to that mitigation, because if a citizen, if citizens have an issue proving that their roof caused their ceiling damage because of Hurricane Irma, and we can't approve them there, we can get them approved through the litigation process of saying, hey, listen, maybe we can't prove that the hurricane did it, but they still need this portion of the roof from ceiling done, because we're trying to, um, uh, mitigate it from the future program.
Yes.
So that's where we're at.
So you kind of took me into, because when I'm thinking about this, I'm going, I'm going to the table with the land bank, um, to see how, or to even properties that may not have been lighted three years ago.
Yes.
But now because of the storm, they are now lighted properties. So how, how can we streamline or have to deal with those properties within this, because that, that also hits another problem that we have, is those type of problems.
Absolutely. Um, once again, that will probably come into place about sixteen months from now, um, but John Hunter and I actually kind of sat down with the state program manager. So in order to get the Perry School site done, had to use a clause that was, I mean, that's the old clause, in order for us to get that project funded, and that clause allowed us to, um, to meet the goal of unmet needs, which just basically means that, um, individuals' homes were damaged, they could not move back in for whatever reason, they couldn't afford it, um, but they just did not want to. But in order to get Perry School site project done, we were able to prove that instead of taking the time to try to figure out what these houses are, let's kind of replace them with new housing needs. Um, I went back about two weeks ago and used that same argument to say, well, hey, listen, since we have these homes that people, um, are either going to either not return to, but either gonna sell them, or either they're gonna donate them to the land bank, why don't we use that same, um, concept of the two million dollars that we invested into the Perry School site, to put it over here specifically for that, and, and specifically for infield projects? If we can get them into the land bank, now we can use those dollars to renovate those homes, and now we're putting new affordable pieces of property. The other reason why I kind of wanted to do that was, if the city, if we're gonna be thinking forward, and we're gonna be thinking about our citizens, if we think about affordable housing, if we put our CBG dollars into any piece of property, now we can control the affordability for a period of time. So if there's a hundred homes that are gonna be in the land bank, or there's two hundred homes in the land bank, if we put a dollar into thirty or forty percent of those homes, we automatically know that now we can control the affordability of those properties, now we have our doctors living next to our teachers, next to our firefighters, and so forth. So, um, we have that plan, we've already set it forth in front of Tommy Norman, who's the, uh, the, uh, state program manager, and saying, listen, we are thinking about this future forward of our being able to put those infield problems back on.
One more question.
Fire danger.
Any of this one is not for any, like, commercial businesses or businesses that, you know, small businesses?
Uh, no, it isn't.
Okay.
No, just residential. It's only, um, residential on one hand, and it's infrastructure on the other hand, to make sure that whatever disasters come next is not gonna, um, keep us.
Right, it's one of this one is supposed to be here.
All right, so.
Let's get that.
So.
Come on, we're talking more.
So the, the sub-recipient agreement, there's forty-seven pages here, but really the goal is to look at page number one and page number nine. So the, the sum of this agreement, there are forty-seven pages here, but really the goal is to look at page number one and page number nine. Um, in order for us to create, in order for us to get this program started, the state did not want us to have to bear the burden of actually starting and standing like a program. They are looking to give us three hundred dollars, I'm sorry, three hundred thousand dollars of starter capital that will allow us to secure our location and our space, hire any, uh, additional staff, and hire any third-party organization that we need to go ahead and get this process started, right? Um, they, as soon as we get this agreed upon, as soon as we get it signed off on, they are probably looking at about January the first. Now, they say it could be before then, but I don't think so, uh, because we are right now in the middle of, um, them approving RFPs. And so it seems like all three of our cities have different RFPs that we spent a lot of time just kind of putting together, kind of pulling from our states. Um, I want to say Monday, just Monday, I get a phone call that says, hey, listen, I want you to continue to create your RFP, but we may put together just one blank template RFP that everyone uses and everyone can go out and get it just because of the federal guide.
What, what department is this all coming from?
Uh, this is the Department of Community Affairs, Chris Hahn is the commissioner, Tommy Norman is the state program manager. So our Department of Community Affairs, the gentleman's agenda is, um, C D G grants. Um, though that we are in the town of the city, we get ours directly from, um, the federal government, but other cities have to apply and kind of go win program activities directly from the Department of Community Affairs.
Is it payback or?
Uh, no, it isn't, um.
That's the, that's the.
Ah.
Do you think, is it sun-statted?
No, it isn't, it's not.
Payback?
Oh, that's a good idea.
No, it's not payback.
How about if they set a time frame for using, using the loan?
Yes, it is, um, the state has a six-year, uh, we have a three-year timeline. But I can only imagine that they're giving us that timeline of three years just so they can have their cushion in, um, closing out the program, so pretty positive that if we move through the program relatively quickly. Once again, it's really about being clear and concise in what we want from our third-party vendors, but at the same time, being efficient and effective. What I want to do is I want to use City Hall as strictly compliance. And that's what we look at, we look at, um, is the grant administration organization a firm that we're using? Are they doing their job? Is the construction company doing their job? Um, and that's what we concentrate on, so doing the applications and data collection and that kind of information. Um, so that's why we have our third-party, make sure that it's covered and successful.
What, what are the incomes here that are going to be applied for this one?
Um, it's going to be all, it's going to be all incomes, actually. Once again, uh...
So you were put, I, you were then?
Yep.
I, I...
Now, now, keep in mind, there, there, there's a, there's a catch with that, right? Because you have to be in three-one-five-two-zero, that's number one, you have to be in three-one-five-two-zero to go, alright, well, you're in the senior accounting. The second thing is that, um, if your insurance is paid, the fee man is paid, or any other individual has paid toward the, um, making home, if you're, if there's an additional two thousand dollars that's kind of left over, that's what you get, right? Um, it's not used for reimbursement, reimbursement purposes, so. So that's going to end up being the catch, so it's really for individuals who really, really, really kind of need it or for individuals who've kind of gotten halfway through the process and, um...
So if you're, if you're the death ball, because it's my statement, you got the same fifteen thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that was, that was hardcore out-of-pocket expense.
Okay.
You can't, you can't, um, submit an application for that fifteen thousand dollars because you, you know, you've already mediated everything.
Yeah, but if you still have fifteen thousand dollars worth of damage that was just left over and you just had no way of, of, of putting that back together, then of course. But if, if, if the home has been completed and everything is, you know, has a spin shot, maybe just kind of out of like fifteen thousand dollars, you don't know, you wouldn't be able to.
What, what is your concept of, of broadband, what, I mean, you, you've got broadband there, what do you envision?
Um, you know what, I haven't put a, a lot of, of, of...
Yes, it's a, it's a great, I mean, what is the vision for?
So I haven't got a lot behind it just yet, just because I'm also collecting, um, data. So before this even came out, DCA is, is, is giving a really big push at giving municipal cities broadband and first of all, right?
Okay, is it such that the city could install its own broadband and?
Yes.
Infrastructure for the city?
Yes, yes.
If that should have been done a long time ago and didn't get it, so they had opportunity.
And, yes, yes, well, you know, uh, installing broadband honestly helps some of our, well, a lot of our business owners that are downtown and that are in town.
You didn't have authority to locate the vision, whoever wants it, it's not like you're...
Well, this is our opportunity, um, to get these things done, to jingle and write a plan. And really I would like to say, uh, thank you for kind of following the vision of not only saying this is something that we can get done, but going ahead and starting to think about things that we could possibly be able to get done in the future. Once again, as long as we can tie, as long as we can tie that activity to, um, getting our city back up and running in a reasonable time and time it took the mitigation to, um, against flood and, well, actual flood and water damage. Uh, once again, we are asking that you guys approve for, uh, the city to execute the contract, for them to give us this award amount, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for us to stand up our C D G D R program and to get it started for citizens to, uh, start getting made home.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So then we, uh, we, we want to get approval of the, uh, the agenda. Before we get approval, we want to execute the community development block, we have the vast recovery from the redevelopment, so we can do a hand agreement.
Second. Give me broader motion and second, my, uh, second, that, uh, for approval of the executing community government block and, and, and recovery and so, so. Uh, then further discussion. I would say, uh, thank you, Steve, for, for championing this for us, as it has been a long haul. Thank you for continuing to work forward what has been done so we can, uh, have our citizens here to share. And so, okay, thank you again. So look for, look for the comments. All the favorable votes right here. Most cares and that, thank you so much. Alright, we move right along on our, on our agenda. We come now to, um, from now, I call beverage license. Um, to approve of, in one June, I call beverage license. The Blaze Pizza owner of the grand old format of Mahoney. And nine oh five, ten hours. Request for beer and wine consumption on purpose. Our chief is presenting.
Evening, Mr. Barry Christman. We received an application for a request for a new alcohol license for Blaze Pizza located in nine oh five, ten hours Plaza. It's for home premises consumption of beer and wine. All fees have been paid and a background check was conducted and negative results. And so this document is brought to you for reconsideration. And this is for the twenty nineteen year, and we'll be putting in a request for the twenty twenty license also after this is up to court.
This is just a short period of time till, for the end of the year.
Yes.
So this is a, you have a question, Commissioner? So this is a new license, um, uh, I have to open it up for, to the public, for anyone who would, uh, consider us approval of this license? Step forward now, please, and name your address, like, if I can speak for or against approval, or just approval of beverage license, alcohol beverage license. Sees as no one has stepped forward, Commissioner, what do you want to pass with the license?
I'd like to know if you approve the license, or you just...
Most essential for approval of the license, the alcohol beverage license for Blaze Pizza. In further discussion. Here is now all the favorable votes right here. Most cares, thank you. Alright, without until item number ten, the city attorney item, consider adoption of order number ten sixty-four amendment to repeal and replace it in its entirety, see the bunch of procurement orders.
I just want to say, oh, the G plays a two-please, oh, that, that.
Uh, we need more commissioners for, we have four years, but, uh, for procurement, for, for procurement orders, for this ten sixty-four. Um, going through purchasing orders, uh, if you've got these, the last commission meeting, have a time to adopt them. So see, maybe you'll like comments, so it's here tonight for, uh, your final review and approval. If you recall, part of the purchasing orders is also going to be in the next item adopted with the public private partnership guideline. Something that is included in the ordinance, if you choose to, if you're good, um, tonight. So there's two items before you would be to approve the ordinance, which will essentially create the ability to have unsolicited proposals and see to know it, and then after that, adopt the guidelines that will govern the proposals. And there were no additional changes other than ones that we discussed at the meeting, uh, at the last meeting. Those changes were made and now it's your final.
So you consider item, take that together? Is that what you're trying to do?
No, 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 I'm looking separate, I just want to make it clear that there's probably...
Okay.
This one is about first and then...
Okay, alright, yes, sir. Well, we have planned this before a couple times. Uh, we have, pouring it up, we put it back together a couple times. Um, this needs to be...
I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance number ten sixty-four to repeal or replace it in its entirety, see the rest of the procurement ordinance.
Motion, oh, sorry. Motion second for, uh, adoption of order number ten sixty-four. Any further discussion on it? Commissioner, we have managed it before a couple times, uh, we have sent our city attorney back before with changing some things and getting some, uh, better, um, definition, clarification too, you know, some, some other items in this ordinance. Hopefully this ordinance will be able to, uh, move us forward, um, and get us on the right track for, for, uh, procurement. Any further comments?
I just asked, put it in here, this is what it is. I think it was...
Alright. If no further comments, uh, entertain a motion. Over here, I'm sorry, my bad. Uh, okay, all the favorable votes raised right here. Uh, all the same tags and like the, the motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven, the city for adoption of city unsolicited proposal guidelines. Is this, can I ask you anything?
Yes, sir. Uh, these guidelines were up for you last time, uh, if you could sort of indicate for you of them. In reality, the, uh, changes that they require that we made are primarily at the stage two under guidelines, A, time period for receiving unsolicited proposal form submission. Uh, commission is not going to be best to be January first, January, or on March thirty-first, which is under a year. And later on, just add the information, such unsolicited proposal shall be arriving and shall be delivered to the city upon the purchasing agent, city hall six hundred plus. I love the point for when we, it could be best to leave it like as necessary to fill in the purchasing agent and the contact information. The other items, as I looked through it, consulted, uh, if you have a call, yes, we contact Augusta. Uh, they are the template I sort of utilized to look through and adopt this, what I would, I mean, the city's guidelines. Um, and there are two things on the end of what are, what the guidelines were represented last time. Look at page, begin on page, oh, there's number, um, thirteen, sorry. Uh, this is the last, in the appendix that Augusta added itself outside of the scope of the adopting guidelines the state, uh, facilities committee put together. I think it makes a lot of sense because the guidelines sort of just cut off, as to once you've gone through, look at the unsolicited proposal, put it out, you know, you have to look out and see if there are going to be other creepy proposals that might matter, they sort of end there, there's not really much of a discussion as to what the next section take. Augusta, now, two additional steps, only then the interim comprehensive agreements that begins on section I, page thirteen at the bottom. Um, what it allows you to do is begin to enter into negotiations with agreement with the proposal, or the proposer or whoever else is proposing. Uh, and then it also can be put together a comprehensive agreement that goes into entirety of the proposal. It'd be like receiving a RFP, or putting out. In a way, I felt like it would be putting out an RFP, setting this to make bids, and then stop at that point. But an RFP would go through, of course, the contracting process, put it together the final agreements and finalize the deal essentially. So the, the additional items just go forth and how the city would put together its comprehensive agreement for the proposal.
But that, that doesn't, um, conflict with that January one, March, or first, and that's just the time period for which? And that's the list, yeah. We're still negotiating on a contract that's passed.
Uh, that's just a day to get it, yeah, that's correct.
You know, you probably will pull the, the contract at the bottom in January or February.
I would say expect quite a little time, it's like I have to... Yes, and the, the process doesn't have to follow through, but, uh, through first. These are, a living room document, can be, of course, amended, the information, if possible, that might need to be done for our first potential proposal, we, you know, so we have to get ahead of the, the, for right now. But, uh, the guidelines appear to be working well for Augusta. They say they got small to large proposals submitted, and we just work through them as they, as they come in.
That's, that's good, thank you for saying that, uh, as we move forward, that would be something that we can do to, uh, to make sure that we have, recover everything. I'm pretty sure, uh, there may be something that someone would discover as we move forward with, uh, unsolicited proposals.
Let me ask you a question. Yes, I know this is, you know, so the purchasing agent, how would that individual move this along, I say? For instance, if, uh, purchase agent received a, a company seat, or a, whatever company it be, and they say, well, something I'm not really interested in, they, they file thirteen. So how do we know that these proposals will get to the proper places?
I think that's going to be one of those things that is case by case we've got to look through. Because I, I think if I understand the question, there's probably going to be proposals submitted to the city that are going to be... that need to be shepherded to the correct department.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I, I think something, if something's paid to the fire department, you know, fire chief or somebody of that nature should be able to determine really not. And not the person who's personally, well, I don't think you need it.
I think it would be similar to what happens with an RFP, in my opinion, depending on how the RFP goes out, what department it would be related to. So the purchasing, purchasing agent submits it, reviews it to see if it's an appropriate thing, determines the department that it would go to, and then in a similar manner as to how they would be scored if an RFP was to be sent out, the appropriate staff would be scoring, the fire, the fire department would be looking through it. I also think there's probably going to be a threshold issue as, as the department had received one if it makes it through the purchasing agent, purchasing agent says this might be something you'd be interested in. I mean, I think the department had to look at it.
Yes, yeah.
Um, but, uh, it'd be a system that we need to work through.
So we have like a logo card.
Not, not if they had.
Let me, um, for you, if, if there's some specific provision here that, you know, is unsolicited bid, we do have some onus to respond back to that unsolicited bid. Like, at least some sort of a form that says, thank you for your submission of your unsolicited bid. It's not, or whatever, and it's signed and dated, and at least they know that you have received it. You went through some, some process or procedure and all this, it's not wrong.
Right.
Yeah, they require you to know it.
Yes. Well, I, I think, uh, move forward too, it shouldn't be somewhere in there where they put it in the system that, that way as Mary Portin said, we have somewhere of, of tactic. Say, we'll put it in the system, they will run it to fire department, or to police department, whatever. So that way we know that one was submitted and we can figure out the disposition of.
We put it in law.
Yes.
Basically, the forms I saw with Augusta, that they actually have a form, letter, everything that just kind of goes out, I say, they'd be for your interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it means stuff that we can take care of, uh, industry that we.
Do you have the whole?
Yes, I have all of it. Very soon, I have all of our existing things downloaded now, you know, work through your question. But I mean, they had it, they had a comprehensive program set up, but I don't know why, uh, in looking through it to read it at the wheel at this point. These are state, these are guidelines that are put together by a state committee, uh, that seem to be working. Uh, and then Augusta adds some flair to them, I think it would be good to put documents in the same area and try to move the process.
Okay. Commissioners, no further questions? Um, are we in favor of that, this, this unsolicited proposal? If so, I, I would take motion.
There's a may or a no, should we approve the option of the city of borough unsolicited proposal guidelines?
Second.
I have seen the, a motion accepted to consider adoption of city of borough unsolicited proposal guidelines. Uh, any further comments and discussion, questions? I'd like to say, uh, it's been, we also went over this in detail and back and forth and tuned it up and put it back together, um, very thoroughly. But as the city attorney said, it's a, uh, living document that can be, uh, changed, uh, as once this proposal comes in, so we can quickly get it right and move on. Maybe something we have to pull up. Anyhow, any further comments? All in favor, please raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Also, just as a confirmation, I have kind of a list of ordinances, potential orders that we mentioned in the past after our last meeting recently, and I'll try to send it out by the end of the year. If it's okay with the commission, if you guys can go through prior trials, we'll try to, I'll try to, that's on track, because the word might be the.
Alright, that, that'd be good. As a matter of fact, uh, we need a list of, of orders that we have passed, and we have updated in the last year or two. So we can see where we're going, but we are realizing that orders are good and face them in the past. But there's now a time to change, some, some languages need to be updated.
What we need to do.
That's what we say, that's what we say.
I'll get that. And I keep a list of the ones that we've updated, uh, present every sentence, so I can get that out too.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Questions, we have come to the end of our regular credit agenda. Uh, are there any need for exam session?
Yes, I believe there is, if they have one, the coordination personnel.
coordination personnel? No real estate?
No.
Well, I entertain a motion for exam session for real estate. I have a motion to get you to return to exam session for real estate personnel. Excuse me, delegation, delegation and real estate. And real estate. Real estate litigation and personnel. Motion second for, to, to retire from exam session for litigation and real estate personnel. All in favor, please raise your right hand? Alright, we shall, uh, go into exam session and after this can turn back into regular sessions to close out our regular. And, and now we are headed to exam session.